What's that? Oh, the county call? Thank you. Yeah. It's...
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here too tonight as well. We appreciate it.
Well, we'd also like to thank Chief Jeff Watson and Bob Heck here. They're here also to answer any questions that you may have today about a consolidation of dispatch for Down River South. On the agenda tonight, you saw some of the information that was presented. What we're here today is to talk about an interlocal agreement between the cities of Trenton, Flat Rock, and Woodhaven along with Brownstown to enter into consolidated dispatch. What this will do for the police department is just a great, great thing. We're looking at accreditation, and I know if Chief Watson gets a chance, he'll speak on behalf of that. Brownstown is already in that stage. Part of the accreditation process is to have an emergency medical dispatch, which this will provide. This will give full-time dispatchers professional dispatch. And we've had some outstanding employees that we've had here at the city of Trenton over the course of the years since dispatch has come. But we've had over thirty, so it has been revolving door, and we're down to seven part-time dispatch right now. It's hard to keep. It's hard to retain, and it's especially hard to train these officers where they all have other jobs. They're coming from other jobs, sometimes on no sleep. There is a safety concern that we have for our officers and also for our public. This will give us the best bet going forward to be a professional dispatch center and to be an accredited agency. I have plenty of information and other questions, but I'll let Chief Anderson talk about how it will affect the fire department as well.
Thanks, Chief. So first, as Chief Hawkins mentioned, these people are considered officers. Dispatch historically in Trenton has been a part-time job. Once they move from police officers doing the dispatching to part-time citizen dispatchers. But the industry has moved towards these are actual first-line responders now. I mean, they get to, they deal with the stresses that our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers deal with because they're on the phones with these people calling in an emergency. That creates another whole profession in and of itself, and we need to be able to support those people. Trenton on their own, or as our own, we cannot afford to do this by ourselves. We need to have partners to make this center go and do it right, is what it does for the fire department. This, right now, we have one person that's answering the phone, allocating which resources necessary to go to these responses, and then deploying those people as well. They're supposed to be on the line with this person. They're supposed to get more information. All the while, they're also in charge of coordinating where our resources are going, how many are going, if they need other resources to back them up, additional responders, other agencies, support structure stuff. They're, they're our communication point. This is one person trying to accomplish this. That's with one call. What happens when we have second calls, third calls? What happens when these calls become a bigger situation in which our, our people are, are in a life-threatening situation such as a structured fire? We need that person to be dedicated to listening to that line to make sure that our responders don't miss something in all the commotion and confusion that they're working with. If somebody's calling for a mayday, firefighters entrapped in that, in that structure, who's going to hear it? We don't have enough people listening to the radio. This is part of the problem. What we're presenting today is, is the actual solution.
And if I, if I may, just to touch on this, more of the operations here from the police department. The residents of Trenton will not see a decrease in any service. Never once would we bring anything towards you that would decrease the service that the residents get. They're actually going to get an enhanced service. This will be emergency dispatch for 911. If you call the non-emergency line for the Trenton Police Department for information, an employee at the Trenton Police Department will answer that phone. If you walk into the police station, there will be someone there to greet you at the station. Never once will we be closing the doors. Never once will we be not answering non-emergency calls. This is for emergency 911 dispatch. I just want to make that clear so the residents and you understand that we will be fully operational stationed. It has no bearing on that at all.
Great. Thank you, guys, for the intro there. I guess we'll start by open up to questions here. Councilman Perugia, and then we'll go to Councilman Cabot after that.
Fire chief, you had mentioned this is going to improve things. Tell me how it's going to improve. And how, and the second question is, how often do situations arise where you have too many incidences where only one, where one person can't handle it?
So, first part is, how does it improve for, for my service? If you call for a medical emergency, you're going to get that one dispatcher that's answering the phone. You're trying to give them your information, what's going on, where you're at. Okay, that dispatcher needs to be able to deploy the fire service. So they're going to basically say, hold on a minute, you know, which is a disconnect of communication with you. So you're in this life-threatening emergency. Hold on a second while I get people for you, get things set up. Our, our business or our troops going out the door, they need the information rapidly entered into the computer aid dispatch system, which it's, if, I don't know how well you are at it, but I'm not great at it, typing and talking at the same time, not the greatest. That dispatcher is trying to enter that information, still maintain communication, get every bit of information they can from you to make sure that we're providing the best service to you, and getting those people to you at the same time. That's a difficult thing. That's a very tall task to ask of one person. What was the, the second part you asked?
Well, the first part still is, how, how, how is this going to help? So what is, what is the new environment you're trying to present and approve?
So the, the newer, the new way this is done, or I wouldn't say new, it's been in existence for quite a while. When you call 911, you're going to get a call taker. It's a dispatcher, but they're on a call taker desk. They're in, taking your information, and they are implementing it into the computer while they're talking to you, but that's their sole job. That computer system is automatically transferring that information to a separate dispatcher, and their job is solely the responders and making sure that the right people are going and where they're going to. And they maintain that communication, so we don't break communication with you, and they don't break communication with us at the same time. That's the standard of the industry. There's also, if there's a police matter, at the same time that there's a fire matter, there's a separate dispatcher that takes the police matter call from that call taker. The call taker can then move on to another call after that stuff has all been dispatched to that, you know, the other dispatcher has sent out the rig. How many times do we have multiple calls? It's actually uncanny for Trenton how often we have both of our rescues going to two different medical scenes at the same time. They can go for some amount of time without any calls, and then all of a sudden, we have multiple at the same time. We have an increase of mutual aid calls with our neighboring departments, so we'll have people that are breaking off and going to other calls besides our own events. And then all it's going to take is one fire, one house fire, a simple house fire, and we're not going to be able to maintain all our communication lines. And so we run into that. We make do right now. That's, that's how it's getting accomplished. But it, there is, it, it doesn't take much for that dispatcher to have to pass on paying attention to the fire ground operation or a barricaded subject situation because they have to answer that phone.
Okay, follow, follow-up question is, who's in charge of the staffing model for the dispatcher? So, you know, my concern would be, excuse me, my concern would be, somebody calls off, now you're understaffed, so you're basically back to square one like we were before we initiated this process. So who's in charge of that staffing model?
Right. So that's something that the Board of Governors through this program is going to be working with Chief Watson as the development and the implementation of this.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, could you also cover EMD dispatch?
Sure.
Emergency Medical Dispatch, because I think that was very lightly hit on, but I'm sure most of the council doesn't understand it or know what it is.
Sure. So EMD is Emergency Medical Dispatch. It's a certification. It's a process in which, when somebody calls for a medical emergency, those dispatchers are trained, certified, to use a certain set of protocols to assist the call taker, up to and including the use of directed CPR over the phone. When you go into that process, you have to have a dispatcher that is dedicated to that call that cannot, obviously, you're not, hold on, keep doing what you're doing. I got to get the crew to go to you. It doesn't work that way. In order to be recognized as certified and actually doing EMD, you have to have two dispatchers all the time. That's the only way it works because somebody else needs to be able to maintain the radio function while that person is focused on how to assist the caller or the bystander or even the patient on how to help themselves or the, the patient themselves.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
I'm on second.
Thank you, Councilman Perugia. To your point as well, in your packet, we're averaging almost 7,000 911 calls to Trenton per calendar year. That doesn't include officer-initiated stops on the police side. So there are many times that numerous phone calls are going off, and this staffing change and model will help us tremendously.
Thank you, Chief.
So we'll go to Councilman Cabot, and then Councilwoman Von Crooks.
All right. So my first question, and I have many, but my first question on this is from a staffing standpoint. You know, this is going to go over to Brownstown. You know, I'm assuming that Brownstown will be adding people to their, you know, to their current workforce. What does that look like, and how many people are we adding to take on, well, at this point, you know, Trenton, but obviously, there's Flat Rock and Woodhaven as well?
Mr. Mayor, if, if you may, would, would it be appropriate to call up Chief Watson to explain a little bit of that?
Absolutely. And yeah, feel free to introduce yourself as well, Chief Watson, too.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for this meeting tonight. I am Jeff Watson. I'm the chief of police for Brownstown. I'm also the chairperson for the Down River Mutual Aid Police Chiefs. So staffing was something that we've been talking about for a very long time, and we need to build this and be flexible because depending on the number of communities that join us depends on staffing. But we've utilized a company called Apco to do a professional model on what, what it looks like. So we'll be adding a significant amount of staff. We, we currently have six full-time dispatchers. I'm in the process of hiring number seven. That'll be part of our Brownstown budget. I believe we're going to be looking at ten full-time dispatchers for what we're, we're having here now and a pool of part-time dispatchers. We've been sitting down with the, with the chiefs from both the fire and the police side to find out what their needs are. The important thing that we're trying to do, we talked about emergency medical dispatch. We've talked about the, you know, how often do you need this? If you would indulge me in a quick story, we have Telegraph Road that runs right down the middle of our north end, right? And when I started, not everybody had a cell phone. A simple crash on Telegraph Road, and I'm going to give you an actual live example. Someone pulling out of Pipers, they get T-boned on Telegraph. It's 50 miles an hour. We have three cars involved. We have someone trapped. We have someone deceased, and we need a lifeflight helicopter. I've got one dispatcher sitting in there, just not unlike anybody else in South Down River, one dispatcher in there. Every person that drives by that crash scene is calling 911 on their cell phone until they see a fire truck or a police car sitting there, and even then, it doesn't stop. Our overflows go to Woodhaven. Woodhaven starts calling us on the radio. Our one dispatcher's sitting in there saying, what's, you know, do you know there's a crash? Yes, we know there's a crash. So that finally calms down. We get our resources to the scene. They're doing the good work that they do. And then someone calls for a lifeflight helicopter, and my one dispatcher's sitting in there calls for lifeflight. Now, where do they decide to land that? There's this beautiful, big, new soccer field or football field at the high school, makes a great landing zone. But every kid in the high school has a cell phone and sees that bird landing. Now they're on social media posting about this, this helicopter landing on the football field. They're calling home to the parents. The parents start calling 911. This goes on and on for one crash on Telegraph Road. The, we have a new system with the high school, and this is spreading rapidly, and I would be surprised if Trenton's not looking at this for gun detection systems. If someone approaches your school with a gun, those are going to be coming in through text to 911. Our dispatchers are answering text calls right now. I think both chiefs alluded to the fact that we can't do this by ourselves. This is, in the state of Michigan, there's fourteen remaining single-seat PSAPs, and ten of the fourteen are in South Down River. The other four are in the gross points, and they're in the same boat that we're doing right now. They want to consolidate as well. Every, almost every other county that has dispatch, it's a county-wide dispatch center. We're like the last, the last ones out here that are trying to operate with one dispatcher working in there. So for staffing, we got to build it, but we want to build a professional model. It's important to me. And, but professional models cost money. But we're, we're here to do it, whether it's our two communities starting it, or the four that we have now, or we still don't know where some of the other communities that have elections this year. They don't want to talk about it right now, but by the end of the year, I believe they'll be coming back to the table. So this model will get bigger, but what we are, what we're going to, to give the communities involved is, like they said, a professional dispatch model. We want to have multiple dispatchers in there to have the call taker, the police radio, the fire radio, so that those resources have people focused on that part of the job going on out there. So, did I answer?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, you know, I don't know if there's a standard of, you know, X amount of dispatchers per, you know, so many thousand, you know, resident or something like that. I was just kind of wondering, you know, we do this, where are we at right now? And where is this going to stack up to, you know, when we get done with it? Because obviously, we're taking on, you know, we're, we're consolidating, or that's the proposal. And, you know, is it, you know, are we still going to be in the same service level or situation? Even we might have more bodies in a building, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to, you know, have less calls. You know, because Brownstown's not a small community, you know, and I'm sure Woodhaven's pretty busy as well, especially with I-75. So that's kind of, I'm just trying to, you know, piece the logistics together.
Yeah, and we, and we plan on building this as, as large as we need to. Our goal is by year three, 2024, if we can make this, the 911 surcharge increase happen, then this gets built and it's self-sufficient. And we have for Down River the model that goes across the state. It won't be a countywide model, but we're in Wayne County. It would be bigger than a lot of counties out there.
Right, right. So... On that, is this going to be housed in Brownstown, your facility? Or are you planning eventually on building a separate standalone facility?
We, we offered up Brownstown because I have a very large building, and I'm not even 50% staffed there. I have office space. I have room. When the entire study was done, and we were looking at all of DMA, the north community said, what, what does this matter to us? We're already consolidated. They are already working with Down River Central Dispatch. So we, we offered Brownstown because I have the space, and I wanted to see this happen. I wanted to try to, to, we've been talking about this for 25 years. Someone needs to make it happen eventually. So I offered the space, but the, the goal is, is we're looking at grant funding right now through, through DCC and DMA. And the goal is to have a separate dispatch center that would also provide then a location for training for both police and fire, a location to store all of our Down River Mutual Aid assets, the fire trucks, the SWAT vehicles. So that's going on right now behind the scenes, looking for funding for that, looking for grant opportunities. But our goal is eventually, this will be its own entity and its own building somewhere in Down River.
Okay, and right now, we're talking about really four communities pairing up. From a DCC standpoint, are we look, I mean, is this kind of phase one? Is there a phase two or three that's going to bring more communities in this? Or do we foresee this to just kind of be these communities? Or we, like, I know we're not going to do, that's probably not the plan, is all the county, but is it going to be all of Down River?
Eventually, it could be all of Down River. Well, what that looks like as far as how it functions, the north is consolidated already. The south needs, needs to consolidate. But if you brought those two entities together, they were in the same building, you could still operate. You would have double the staff and be able to handle that, that additional workload. So, I kind of lost my train of thought there. We're trying to build this to, but phase one would be whoever we can get to join with us right now. By the end of the year, we'll be past a couple of elections that I think are holding back. I've got a couple of communities that don't want to talk about it right now because they have, they have elections going, and these kind of things can get political. I understand that, but we're trying to make it happen. So a couple of months back, we sat down with everybody in South Down River, and we said, who's still very interested in it right now? And these four communities were, spoke up and said, yeah, we're, we want to talk about it still. So that's where we're at.
And I have a lot of questions, but I'll, just one more, and then I'll turn it over to somebody else if they'd like to ask some questions as well. Staffing, you mentioned, again, we have our current part-time staff. Is there an opportunity for them to move over to the, the new operation if that is in fact a go-ahead?
Absolutely. In fact, we have at least one member of your staff right now that, that is on our hiring list. We value experience, and I think the chief mentioned earlier. What we talk about, when we're talking about deficits in our dispatch center, that's not on, on the dispatchers. They do a tremendous job with what we've given them to operate in. We value that experience and that, so we would certainly, we, we have a test that we run the dispatchers through. I'm confident that they would do well in that process because they've been functioning in this environment, and we value their experience and especially coming from a department that works much like we do with the same operating systems, the same CAD systems. So they would have the opportunity. I'm hiring right now, so we haven't closed our process. We'll continue to run that through, so they will have an opportunity.
All right. I do have some more questions, Mayor, but I'll turn it over to somebody else if they'd like to ask.
We'll come back. Yes, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Von Crooks?
Yeah, some of the comments that, what's on here? Some of the comments that were, you know, made, or questions, I, you know, I had the same questions. But just a couple of comments. First of all, people live in Trenton because of our service, because we're on it. And I don't think for one minute that I've lived here, and I've been here 64 years, has there ever been a problem with our dispatcher getting people to, to our homes or to our businesses. I mean, you guys are, our guys are right on it. We've never had a problem as far as I'm concerned. I hate going out of this community to do the job that I think we're already doing fabulously. But that being said, we, you know, tried to do this with Riverview, and from what I understand, it didn't work out too well. So we canceled our, canceled our, you know, contract that we had with Riverview. So I'm, you know, I'm concerned about that, number one. And, but, but here's the other comment I have. Anything that runs more efficient for our community, for our residents, and, you know, gets somebody to the, you know, scene the fastest and the most efficient way, I'm all for it. I mean, I, you know, I'm all, all for looking into this, and, you know, I'd be on board for sure. But I want to say, there's been nothing wrong with what we've been doing in Trenton, and our residents live here because of it. So I'm, you know, I'm on board because if it's something more efficient and more well-run, then, you know, that's great. But if it doesn't work out, I want an out clause that, you know, we can get out of it. If, if our residents don't like it and it doesn't work, you know, I am, it's all for about Trenton, and that's what I care about.
And if I could, I, I understand that, and I will tell you, in the beginning, I was skeptical. How can this work? I know you have a lot of pride, and we have a lot of pride in what we do and what we offer here. The only reason I would suggest this from our police department is because we're going to get better service. And we have willing participants here. Whatever happened in the past with other agencies, that was a different time, different administrations. But I do remember it, but we have two willing agencies here, and hopefully four total, that are going to make this a go and give our residents better, better results.
And, and that's, that's my whole point. Like I said, I'm willing to look into it. I'm willing, I would like to know the cost. I'd like to know what the cost would be to our residents, to our taxpayers. And I want to let them know that no matter what, they'll be getting the best service. And that's what concerns me the most, that our residents get the best service. And of course, other cities, too. I care about the Down River, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering our bases here.
I would, you'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't say I agree with you, and if the tables were turned, I would have the same concerns and questions. I can tell you that collectively, you know, the Down River communities, we work very well together. collectively, you know, the Downriver communities, we work very well together. We operate much like Trenton does. I've got a full-time staff of dispatchers. Many of them have been there 20 years. We have good response time, as it stands. We're trying to do some things that, you know, I'm going through accreditation, and I've also been through now a state 911 audit, where they put me on notice that we're going to, they're going to mandate eventually EMD dispatch. That's the best practice. Saves from our great EMS service that both Trenton and Brownstown have, will tremendously be enhanced by having emergency medical dispatch. When someone has a heart attack, starting the heart back up is one thing, keeping the blood flowing so that there's brain activity when someone gets to the hospital is another. And that's why EMD dispatch is a best practice. That's why the accreditation that I'm going through right now in that Trenton, it sounds like you're embarking on that, mandates that you have EMD dispatch. That means two people in there at least. So, our staffing could never go below two, because if someone's giving the 911 instructions on the phone, someone else needs to be making sure EMS is getting there on time. And I, we had some numbers from the deputy chief in Woodhaven. It at least doubles your chances of survival on an EMD call, and in some cases, even triples it. It's the keeping that blood flowing to the brain. Someone, even someone trained in CPR with a family member might panic and not remember how to do CPR, but a calm voice at the other end of the line, a professional that can talk them through it, bring them back to their senses. If I could indulge in one more story, 2001, not going to name the city, it was another Downriver community. My mom goes to a festival, has a heart attack on September 9th, 2001, a couple of days before 9/11. Where did I spend, what, where did I experience 9/11? In Southshores. Back then, it was Southshores Emergency Room, Waiting Room. My mom went down, had a heart attack. They didn't have EMD dispatch. They didn't have a defibrillator. They got her to the hospital, did CPR, all the way to the hospital. Once fire got there, and they got her started with a defibrillator. On September 12th, we said goodbye and disconnected my mom. She had heart activity, no brain activity. So, I'm a little passionate about EMD dispatch and the care that we give our community members. We have to have two dispatchers to do that. So, I care about Downriver. You can't go through, from one part of Brownstown to another without going through some of the other communities. So, I look at our, my first community is Downriver. The community I live in and work for is Brownstown, but should something happen to me or a family member, it could just as easily happen if I'm coming here to eat at, you know, the Roundhouse, or one of your great restaurants on West Road here. And just as likely that'll happen there as it would in Brownstown. So, that's why I'm passionate about this project.
I don't blame you. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Chief. Councilman Benedetti?
I'll be real short. Chief, thanks for coming. I appreciate how you took charge of this. I don't know if you know, I used to work across the street for Dean when he was the chief, and worked with Keith for many years. I think this is the best thing we could do. We tried in the past. We've done some other, combined things with your city, your township, and it's worked out great for us. I think everybody here needs to understand. I know Scott, you've got your questions, Timber and Nelson, and probably even Wendy and Dora, but this is, this is something we have tried to do for years. It is going to improve it, because it does take the burden off of one person. They can talk to who's ever calling in, and somebody else handles everything else. So, I appreciate everything you guys have done. I know Chief Hawkins, you probably walked into part of this, so your predecessor, we thank him for that. Keith, I think it's something great, and I cannot look, or cannot wait to watch it happen, because I think it'll be wonderful for our residents. Thank you.
Yeah. So, Councilwoman Tate?
Yeah, and just quickly, I think at the end of your statements, you answered it, but just to clarify the importance of accreditation, and I think you alluded to that, you know, you have to have a minimum number of staff, and they're doing certain dispatch in a certain way. So, this answers that question, and I think you alluded to it, but if you had anything else you want to add about the importance of accreditation, and versus us trying to do that ourselves, versus joining the, this project?
What accreditation means is best practices, right? And someone from the outside looking at your operation and holding you to those best practices. So, I can tell you that, you know, I've been doing this job for 32 years now, and I thought we had the best practices, and we've had to make a lot of changes, because, and accreditation is an ongoing process, right? It's going to continually evolve and change. But we've decided to take that stance and get accredited, not for a plaque or for a sticker to put on your police car, but so that when I retire someday, I can know that we set something in place that will carry on well beyond my tenure here. So, accreditation simply means, whether it's EMD dispatch or a use-of-force policy, that you're continually looking at your policies, your procedures, and how you operate, and keeping those best practices flowing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reddigan?
So, I really don't have any questions. I actually spoke to Chief Hawkins yesterday and sent him and Chief Anderson email with a load of questions. I can tell you, after researching and studying this, I believe in it. I do. I think it would be a strong enhancement and advancement for all of our communities down river. I think it would be really great for us to try this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Cabot, do you want to get the last?
I do. I just want to understand the financial side of this, kind of quickly. Chief Hawkins, what is our, do we have an estimated cost of what it costs to run our dispatch center?
Our dispatch center, well, we were on a fiscal year, so the Brownstown, the model that we have is on a calendar year. So, I broke it down to fiscal year and calendar year. So, in 2020, we paid approximately $154,000 for dispatch. 2021, $156,000. 2022, $188,000 for dispatch. Those were the last three calendar years that we've had. And the increase was due to training, multiple people working to have people trained. It's a revolving door, and right now, we leave many seats unfilled, and we need to act quickly here to get something going.
Okay. And what we're proposing is $134,000 in 2024. 2025, it jumps up to $212,000, almost $213,000. And then 2026, we're looking at $286,000. That's a pretty, okay. Just a pretty substantial increase, but I guess we're getting better service for it.
There's an increase in service as well, so.
Mr. Councilman, too, I just want to interject, too, that, one, I mean, the initial year, yes, it is on the less expenses side, but making a change, going from part-time employees to full-time, unionized dispatchers, professionalized, and you should scrutinize the cost. But speaking as a firefighter for 35 years, this is an investment that is going to make a difference in your police officers, your firefighters, every single day, and the residents. It's going to make it better and safer and increase survivability. This is one of the easiest, from the inside looking out, one of the easiest investments to make. We're just trying to get the message to you guys.
I understand, Dean. I'm not against it either.
No, no.
Okay, I'm not against it, but I just want to understand the financing of it.
Yes.
Okay, so. One note, for the document I'm looking at, does have a typo on it. 2024 is put in here twice. So, it looks like year one is 2024, year two is 2025, but at the bottom, the subtotal does say 2024, so. But I'm all set now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from council for any of the chiefs here? Cool. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate it. I think that should cover it all.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bonkrooks, did you have anything?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. So, all right. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the study session.
So moved.
We'll roll right into the regular, moved and supported, adjourn the study session at 7:08 PM. Just going to close out this Zoom, and we're going to start.
Recording stopped.
Now, get right into the regular meeting here.
Recording in progress.
All right. Seamless transition. We did it. All right. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And for the record, too, if we could all please observe a moment of silence after the pledge. We had Gene Pendle, a longtime resident, art teacher, and one of our garden angels at the cultural center, who actually created the children's garden there, passed away, as did retired Trenton firefighter Patrick Feltz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. If we could call this meeting to order at 7:09 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bonkrooks?
Here.
Benedetti?
Here.
Cabot? Pete?
Here.
Perugi?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. First, we have on the agenda is the minute approval of the July 17th, 2023 regular meeting.
So moved.
Move, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have a retirement plaque for Virgil Manney, but I don't believe he is here this evening. So, if we could just get a motion to send him the plaque there, moved and supported. We'll get that taken care of as soon as possible. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, for the retirement of Virgil Manney, our building official. Next up, I have here a proclamation for National Rail Safety Week. I'll just do my best to read this briefly. Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across the United States, oh, thank you, from the September 18th to the 24th, 2023, whereas 2,194 rail-grade crossing collisions resulted in 803 personal injuries and responsible for 274 fatalities in the U.S. in 2022, whereas 1,208 pedestrian trespassing casualties occurred in the United States resulting in 658 pedestrians being killed and another 550 injured while trespassing on railroad property right-ofways during 2022. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right-ofways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, sharing pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, Transportation, all local county, state, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at the national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. I therefore, Stephen J. Rezepa, Mayor of the City of Trenton, do hereby attest my full support, proclaiming September 18th to 24th, 2023 National Rail Safety Week, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. If we could get a motion to support.
Support.
Part of the regular meeting. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have public comment regarding agenda items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items later in the meeting. To ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me. And please let me your comments to five minutes. Anyone on Zoom, please use the raise hand function, and we'll get you queued up. If not, not seeing anyone there. All right, we'll move right on along. Next up, under appointments, to the Library Advisory Board, I'm requesting this body's approval of my appointment of Jill Cooper to the Library Advisory Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, to replace former Controller Karen Saul.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabot?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Perugi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Abstain.
Bonkrooks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have from our City Beautiful Commission, we've got some folks here from that today, Beautification Council of Southeastern Michigan, Certificate of Recognition. So, if you guys would like to come on up, great. Uh, do we have the mic down here, actually? If you want to go, it'll probably, might be easier at the podium for you all. That's okay.
Good evening. I'd like to read to you a letter that we received from BCSM. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Beautification Council of Southeastern Michigan, I am very pleased to inform you that the City of Trenton has been recognized and honored as a continuous paid active member of the Beautification Council of Southeastern Michigan for 60 years, since organization inception in November of 1963. This is a very remarkable achievement, shared by only a handful of communities, and one that the City of Trenton should be very proud of. The City of Trenton's active BCSM membership achievement was formed, was formally recognized at the Beautification Council's 60th Anniversary Celebration held this past June. A certificate of recognition was presented, and it is endorsed with this mailing. Your active membership support helps enhance our valued education and membership programs, while promoting BCSM goals of restoring, preserving, and enhancing the beauty of Southeastern Michigan communities. Thank you again. Sincerely, John Darren. He is the president of BCSM. This is a certificate that we received. We are very proud and happy to have that. Of course, all this can only be done with the support of everybody here in the city, mayor and council, all the different organizations. We hope that we can continue to do this with your support to keep Michigan, not Michigan, but also Michigan, but help keep our city beautiful. Thank you.
And I don't mean to tell you that you guys are wrong, but in reality, the only reason that we're able to do it is because of you all. So, thank you all very much. I just want to give you all another special round of applause. So, we get lots and lots of compliments about all the great things that you guys have done, and I know that we'll continue to do. You make it very, very easy to support all the work you do, and anything you need, let us know for sure. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. If we could get a motion to receive and file a certificate, moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right. And no, we won't make you stay for the whole meeting. If you guys don't want, we won't be offended.
Bob can stay.
All right. Next up, we have here, I'll take this one, Michigan Municipal League Designation of Voting Delegates, asking for this body's approval to designate myself as a delegate and Councilman Benedetti, excuse me, as alternate voting delegates at the upcoming Michigan Municipal League Convention.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Yes. Okay, our, do we need a motion to remove it, because it's still posted? Yeah, okay. So, number, the second item we have here from the Vintage Market, we're going to postpone this actually till the next meeting. Hopefully, there was a couple small changes that needed. If we could get a motion to table this until the following meeting?
Support.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And yeah, it's just a couple logistical things to get hashed out there, but should be all good for the next go-around. All right. Madam Clerk, do you want to take this next one? The Northland Court Residents Block Party Request.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. The Northland Court Residents are asking for permission to hold a block party on Saturday, August 19th, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and approve the road closure of Northland Court. This would be under the direction of the Police Department and the DPS.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. All right. We'll go to Department Heads and Officials. First off, we have a few items from Dean, I think the first, you know, 62 or so. So, first up here, we have the sale of land parcel. So, Dean, I should get started here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you have the proposed sale of a small pie-shaped Before you have the proposed sale of a small pie-shaped parcel of land near Fort and West, Due to the diligent work of Mr. Wagner and our assessor, Joanie Barnett, they were able to figure out that we do actually own and control that little pie-shaped piece of property. Councilwoman Von Kruks probably remembers several years ago, this area came up for discussion or whatever, so there was some dispute over whether this was in the right of way and controlled by the county, but we were actually deeded this property in 1970, and Ms. Barnett was able to track it down and confirm it, so we can actually assign a parcel number to it, and the owner of the gas station, and Ivan Sharark, who also has the property adjacent to both sides of the little pie-shaped parcel, has been interested for some time in purchasing it. Ms. Barnett came up with what she felt was a fair market cash price, so I'm asking you to move the, approve the sale of parcel 82-54-019-02-0008-001, in the amount of $17,400, plus all fees, survey legal and related costs to the Fort and West Fuels Property LLC, Ivan Sharark, 670 North Pontiac Trail, Walt Lake, Michigan, 48390, and allow the city attorney to approve formal purchase agreement, be it for the result that the mayor is authorized to execute the purchase agreement.
Support.
Well, that would be some. I will make the motion, that's fine.
Okay.
Support.
Got motion and support, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you all. Next, from Dean here, we've got termination of the intergovernmental agreement with Gibraltar in regards to building department inspections.
Okay, historically, we have since, over 10 years, we've handled Gibraltar's building inspections and processing of their permits. They have, they are interested in bringing back a building department of their own and have requested to terminate their agreement with us. I spoke to our building official, Bill Bislin, and he's very excited about offloading this part of the business, so to speak, and what it means for the Trenton residents is we'll be able to focus all of our hours on Trenton. I think it's going to speed up the permitting processes, the inspections, and everything because we won't have that distraction. Not that it hasn't been a good relationship with Gibraltar, but I think everyone on council is aware that due to attrition and a lot of different things like that, whatever, we could use a little lighter load up there in that office to really make sure we're serving the residents first and foremost. So move to approve the request of withdrawal from the IGA between Trenton and Gibraltar related to building permits and inspections effective August 31st, 2023, and be it further result, the mayor or his designee is permitted to execute any documents to conclude the IGA.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
As a sidebar, with this opportunity to have it Trenton in-house only, are we going to move to the digital age where we're going to be using iPads and stuff for this assessment? So that way, we can have better service to the customer or the residents?
Yes, so that was discussed, and I'm sure, and you were well aware, but that was discussed during the budget process, and that definitely is part of the game plan, and Mr. Bislin knows going forward that that's going to be an essential component to be able to speed up the process and to eliminate the duplication of effort that goes from paper to computers. So that is one of his top priorities, we're letting him get more acclimated to being the leader in that area, but that is a very high priority.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you. Next up, from the Administrator here, settlement release and agreement.
This, this settlement release dates back to late February when we had a sewer issue that was traced back to the contract that didn't, didn't complete the project as, as expected. So council graciously approved the claims, even though there is municipal immunity from sewer backups and claims. They approved the claims with the goal of recouping the claims back from the insurance company after we sorted through it, and they have offered full restitution or reimbursement in the amount of $29,348.99. So I'm asking council to approve and allow the mayor to execute the document titled Settlement and Release of All Claims from Houston Specialty Insurance Company in return for the acceptance of payment in the amount of $29,348.99.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you all. Walgreens National Opioid Sentiment Settlement.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is the third opiate settlement that has come before council. This is just signing off on this one. These, these have historically produced, I think, at least $1,300 a year, up to probably $2,600 a year, in that range of money coming into the city. Those are restricted funds, and they have to be, or they're supposed to be used for the war on, the war on drugs, I guess, or something along those lines. So this is just another one of the settlements that was lingering out there. I believe there's still one more that we would be part of the class action over, but I haven't seen any results from it. So asking you to move to approve the Walgreens National Opiate Settlement Agreement, authorize the city administrator to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the city.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you. And then last one before you're relieved, resolution proposing charter amendment to section 4.7 of the city charter.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you have a draft and a proposed resolution that would go before the voters this year, in essence, we, what was suggested and discussed amongst various council members over the last, at least the last couple of years, is there's been no change in the compensation for mayor and council in 28 years. So this proposal would go to a flat rate instead of a per-meeting rate, and would compensate the mayor at a flat rate of $18,500 per year, paid bi-weekly. Members of council would be a flat rate of $7,500 per year, paid bi-weekly, and then there's a clause that outlines the clerk, treasurer, and assessor, which you just recently approved, the wage changes, I think, two months ago, or no, last month. So I'll read the, whereas, it's quite long. If, if I can, if I can just, yeah, that would be great if I could exempt it, but that, that is in a nutshell, the proposal. Just fact-checking or whatever, the percentages and everything, over the 28 years, I know it seems like it could be a bigger jump or whatever, it is in the comparable of communities. I can, I don't have to, but I will vouch for council and the mayor that the work you do is invaluable to the community, and you're not up here to make a buck, but there should be, I think, and I'm, I think there should be ample compensation for the time that you give back to the community, the investment that you all have to make in your, your elections or attending the numerous functions that you walk in, and it's 50 bucks here, 100 bucks here, and they want you to sponsor this and that, whatever. I think it's, it's very fair, and it's still, like I said, over 28 years, if you take the inflation calculator and you plug it in, you're still not, you're, you're still behind inflation, so.
There's another reason for it also, and when the last modification was made in 1995, it was based upon attended meetings and additional payments for attended meetings. It just, it's become cost prohibitive to maintain and provide the records, and it creates, have too much time in the, for the city finance office to control it all.
Mr. Ackman is correct, and all seven of you, no, six of you, we'll exclude my boss, but six of you have probably all had to be chased down to make sure you fill out all your paperwork to get paid and everything, and a few of you have had to insist that you get it done as nicely as I could, so it's before you, you can do as you like. Hopefully, you're happy with the draft of it, and go, go to town.
Should be, asking for approval of resolution 2023-17, proposing charter amendment to section.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you all. All right, next up, we have our city controller. First, we have BSNA Software Annual Service Renewal. Ms. Cooper?
Yep, good evening. Before you is the annual invoice for the BSNA software service and support fee, so as per our agreements with BSNA, the invoice reflects an increase based on the cumulative yearly CPA, so just looking for a motion to approve the payment of BSNA software and annual support, service and support fee of $25,828.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? See, oh, Councilman Prueji.
Yes, was this budgeted?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have from Controller again, along with our Treasurer, Mr. McCullough, Invoice Cloud Credit Card Processing Company Agreement Request.
Okay, we haven't, we have not rehearsed this, so I apologize for taking, but you have before you a proposal, and, and most of this was driven by Jill Cooper, our Controller, but then Deputy Treasurer, about basically revitalizing and moving forward with a new credit card system. We've been in the credit card system, I believe, with Point and Pace since 2013. It was time to upgrade that, to move forward, and to be ready for the next phase of, of the technology that's, that's we have available. And again, I could read this to you, it's Invoice Cloud makes our payment process much more user-friendly, it creates an experience that is very, it's frictionless, I love that term, frictionless, for the customer, and that's what we're about, customer service. So we would suggest doing this, it's not going to, in fact, it will, should save money in the long run and, and in the short run. We've got, as, as it says in the proposal, Invoice Cloud assumes full liability and regulations and is PCI compliant, which is very important because it basically ensures that the information that we get from our customers, our taxpayers, is, is secure. The PowerPoint presentation is attached, you had that, I'm sure you went over that, it's very exciting, by the way, and, and Jill and I went through that presentation with Sean McAnally, the representative from Invoice Cloud, last Friday, I believe it was, and so I told, I told Jill that I wasn't going to put on spot, but I'm here just to make the presentation. If you have detailed questions that you're looking, getting into the minutia, this is the person right here. Look at your face turn. Anyway, she's done a great job with it, I must say. And, and by the way, there, our attorney has looked at it and given it thumbs up. I may be overstating that, but it's what I got.
So moved.
Port.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilwoman Pete.
So it's, it's, just to be clear, it is more efficiently priced for us, but not for the customer who's using a credit card. It's still a 3% fee, correct?
The same fee.
Yeah, and so you want to be careful if you are paying your summer taxes, that a 3% fee could be a high amount, and there's.
Some people still choose to do it to get those credit cards.
Yeah, but if you do it, now, it said something about the ACH, so that would be, you know, directly taken from your checking account, then, is that, and there's a $3 fee for that, but much less than 3%.
The, the $3 fee is if people are online and choose to pay using a routing number and account number.
Yes.
So instead of a credit card, then they, the 3%, then they get charged a $3 fee.
Just 3, yes.
They can elect through, through Invoice Cloud, it's not as common for the tax bills as it is for the water bills to, to be on like an auto payment, where then we would, they would just pull the funds from their account. They don't get charged for that, the city gets charged 50 cents per person. But like I said, that's not as common for the, the tax bills as it is for the water bills.
Okay, thank you.
And just an FYI, I asked Jill during her busy day today to, to give us an idea as to how much is being processed through credit cards, and truly, as she has stated, not much of it is going through with the taxes because it's such a high number, a large number, and so the percentage, the 3% becomes pretty significant. But totally, there's about 6% of our gross revenues are by credit card, and keeping in mind, back in 2013, as I recall it, that's when we started accepting credit cards, and so we fast move, and so we're, we're ready for the next phase of making it user-friendly, and the point, we want to get to the point where, where we don't handle the credit card at all, that they swipe it on the outside or they tap it, and, and that's truly where we want to go, but it's small baby steps, and we're getting there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keeping you up here for one more, Mr. Treasurer.
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Treasurer, all yours.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Anyways, it's, it's my pleasure to recommend the appointment of Amanda Tackett as Deputy Treasurer for the City of Trenton, and Amanda's got quite a bit of experience and background to handle the job. She has the capacity to learn, communicate with others, and has a keen focus on customer service, so, so very important in every department of the city. So we've, we've met because as a part-time treasurer, it becomes incumbent, becomes important priority, that the part-time treasurer is able to rely on the full-time deputy treasurer to carry out and communicate with me as to the priorities, the heads-up that, that just comes about naturally. So I, I fully endorse this and, and hope for your concurrence.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, and just to add to that, she would have been here this evening but had a bit of unforeseen circumstances come up, so hopefully I'll have her at the next meeting or two.
Yeah.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two items from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent here. First up, emergency repair to the mainline sewer camera.
Thanks, Mayor. The thousand-foot cable that powers our mainline sewer camera failed. The cable has been on the unit since its purchase in 2017. The cable has endured multiple cuts and abrasions over the years traveling through the sewer lines. We are mandated by the state to clean and televise our entire sanitary sewer system on a five-year cycle. With only being able to perform this work during warm weather months, time was of the essence. Therefore, we proceeded with an emergency repair to keep us on track. This repair was performed by the Jack Duhany Company, as they are the sole provider of this equipment. The total cost of this repair was $6,201.14, and I am seeking authorization to pay this invoice.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
What would be a new cable cost?
That was the cost of the new cable.
It is.
That's a complete replacement.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you, Kevin. Next, we have emergency repair to the rooftop AC unit at the police and fire station.
One of the two compressors on the rooftop AC unit for the police and fire department building has failed. Since this discovery, the unit has been running on one compressor and is unable to cool the building sufficiently. Since the building is staffed twenty-four-seven, an emergency expedited repair was necessary as parts were needed to be ordered. Expert mechanical who is providing the repair has proven to be the lowest cost of the qualified contractors to service this large rooftop unit. Therefore, I'm seeking authorization of payment to expert mechanical in the amount not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Funds are available in the facilities building maintenance account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Uh, next from our library director, Ms. Jensen, we have our Story Walk installation.
Good evening, council. I am very excited to present to you before you the request for purchase and installation of the Story Walk for Trenton. And we had three bids on this cost and the best bid in both reviews and amount was for Pioneer Signs. And we had a temporary installation this past weekend. If anyone was at the Chalk the Walk, it was there for everyone to see. And I'm just asking for permission to purchase and install at the, not to exceed six thousand dollars.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you so much.
All right, we've got two items now from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker. First up, we have here is the Rotary Park Final Design and Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Department has worked over the last year to finalize the overall plan for the, for Rotary Park. We've worked with the community and council to combine ideas, concepts that make this the best park yet in Trenton. The next step is upon us and the DDA is working with us to start the project. We are requesting, requesting your honorable body's approval to move forward with the next stage, the park development, which is the final design, engineering, bid services and construction administration through Beckett and Raider. Beckett and Raider has worked with us on the initial design and will continue to help us see the project through. The cost of the final stage will be two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and funded through the DDA. Project will create, recreate the gem of downtown Trenton.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Uh, the next, we have the Trenton Public Schools Usage Agreement.
The Parks and Recreation Department has been working with the school district to provide more spaces for our increased programs and offerings for the Trenton residents. In turn, this has led to an increased cost for the city of Trenton and public schools. The public schools have proposed, proposed a waiving fees for both parties' usage of facilities for the upcoming school year as a trial. Facility agreement will begin August first, this past week, twenty twenty-three and end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The trial will allow both entities to evaluate facility usage and move forward as a cost-neutral solution for both.
Uh, so moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, we've got Chief Hawkins up here with a couple items. First, we have agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The time has come for the Trenton Police Department to come up with outside-the-box thinking to solve the problem of reliable vehicles. For too long, patrol and detective administrative vehicles were purchased through a steady stream of forfeiture funds that have long since dried up. The twenty twenty-four budget and budgets going forward have machinery and equipment line item for purchase and outfit of new patrol vehicles for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. While this would help, it doesn't account for the increased maintenance costs, aging vehicles, high mileage, and would take over five years just to update our everyday road fleet. This outdated model continues the cycle of unreliable vehicles with high mileage and costly repairs. Of the twenty-three vehicles in the police department fleet, almost half the fleet, eleven, have over a hundred thousand miles on them. A third of our patrol vehicle fleet was down in mid-July and repairs have needed to be made. The remedy going forward is a complete overhaul of where our department handles patrol vehicles. Patrol vehicles, the officer's mobile office, it needs to be in reliable working order. With the studies we've done, the average life of patrol vehicle for the city of Trenton should be three to four years and ninety thousand miles. After that, maintenance and reliability become an issue. The following proposal that you'll see after this will have our patrol vehicles replaced every three years, which will not only give us quality cars but reduce our overall cost as maintenance begins to increase after four years of wear and tear. A partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management to finance vehicles and manage a fleet will give department immediate results and a long-term solution. Enterprise is the number one provider for Sourcewell, a national competitive pricing program for fleet vehicles. This partnership will ensure our yearly total fleet does not exceed the budgeted one seventy-seven, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand and will monitor the value of all fleet vehicles to handle buyback when they're most cost-effective. The general assumption of our program is patrol vehicles replaced every three years and detective administrative vehicles every five. Timeline is continuously monitored to ensure value-on-return, mileage and maintenance are beneficial to the department.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Yeah, I'm requesting agreement between Trenton Police Department and Enterprise Fleet Management to be approved to be our purchasing and managing agent for police vehicles.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks.
I appreciate, that was gonna keep going and bore you, so I thought I'd cut to the end there, so.
Good, next up, we've got, well, really, purchase and finance of eight fleet vehicles.
After reviewing repairs and analyzing our fleet, the decision has been made to move to the Chevy Tahoe for patrol vehicles. We have reviewed the Michigan State Police twenty twenty-three police vehicle evaluation documents to guide us in our decision-making. While the floor explorer has slightly better gas mileage, the Chevy Tahoe has less maintenance issues, more room, and a higher resale value, which is extremely important in the Enterprise Fleet Management model. The initial one-time upfitting of a new Chevy Tahoe was quoted by our preferred vendor, Priority One, at nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents per vehicle. This would all be billed through Enterprise Fleet Management after four thousand per patrol vehicle was rolled into the purchase, leaving fifteen thousand two twenty-seven fifty-five remaining. Moving forward, the changeover from upfitting Tahoe to Tahoe after the entire fleet is in place would only cost approximately four thousand per vehicle. These funds would be offset through Enterprise Fleet Management buyback program. The goal of our non-pursuit and non-patrol fleet is also to include hybrid vehicles to bring our overall fleet package to fifteen to twenty percent hybrids. The breakdown is follows, five Chevy Tahos for seventy-two thousand, three DB admin vehicles for twenty-seven-six, for a total vehicle payment of ninety-nine thousand six hundred dollars, and that cost is before Sourcewell or MyDeal government incentives. The initial upfitting is seventy-six thousand one hundred thirty-seven seventy-five for a total of one hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, which is below the budgeted number for vehicles this year. Enterprise Management is a preferred and selected fleet vendor of the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. With that, the resale that Enterprise has given us, fifty-five thousand, would offset that cost, so the ma, the one-year maximum cost is not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for eight vehicles. I'm requesting Enterprise Fleet Management to purchase and manage on the department's behalf, five Chevy Tahos for patrol.
Paper scissors, this one, or something?
Well, as we spoke in our study session, the goal of dispatch consolidation is service, better service to the residents and better service and safety to our employees, both police and fire. For the police department to achieve its goal of accreditation through the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, Emergency Medical Dispatch or EMD is the requirement and best practice. This consolidation model will provide that. As I spoke earlier, residents will not see a change in service when calling or visiting the Trenton Police Station. There will still be someone answering the non-emergency lines and someone to talk to when you enter the building. This move is strictly for emergency nine-one-one and radio dispatch. We have some outstanding employees in our dispatch that were hired to full-time dispatch in other agencies. Unfortunately, it's been a revolving door and all members of our dispatch service have been provided the opportunity to apply for positions in the Brownstown model.
Anything for you?
What I'm requesting, or we're requesting, is move to approve the attached interlocal agreement between the City of Trenton and Charter Township of Brownstown for operation of a joint dispatch center with a first-year cost of approximately one hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents with funding from the, the account one oh one three oh one seven oh six and allowing the mayor to execute this agreement on behalf of the City of Trenton.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, lastly, under this section at least, we have wastewater treatment plant, Ms. Willison here, purchase of sludge pumps, and welcome back here.
Thank you. I'm asking for council's approval to purchase two new sludge pumps for the wastewater treatment plant. Our current pumps that we have in place are roughly twenty years old and we did find out earlier this year that they've become obsolete, we can no longer get parts for them, they're not manufacturing them anymore, so we made it a priority to put, put the money in this budget, so I'm asking your approval to purchase two sludge pumps from Low Pro at a cost of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, and like I said, it was a budgeted item for this year.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilman Prushy?
Yes, moving forward in the future, in the replacement cycle, what, what is your goal to replace these so we don't end up twenty years out?
Um, well, it's, part of it was all part of the capital, I mean, I'm sorry, the asset management plan, where we evaluate all the items that, you know, the years, the wear, the tear, everything, and the sludge pumps were actually a critical item, and we did have some other stuff that were critical in the past year, so now we're obviously prioritizing what is critical to replace first and obviously finding out this year that we can no longer get parts for this, we kinda moved it to the top of the list for this year.
I, I understand that component, but my question was basically, moving forward, do you look to try to replace these in a ten-year window, seven-year window?
You know, we try to do a fine line at the treatment plant, like if something's working fine, we don't necessarily replace it just to replace it, but obviously we take in the, how many times it breaks down, the cost to replace it, so yes, we do review that kinda stuff every year to see, you know, what, what is critical and what, you know, move it obviously to the top of the list.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Julie. All right, under late communications, I know we have at least the thirty-third District Court fines, costs and fees for July of twenty twenty-three, and I will defer to our court delegate, Councilwoman Bond Crooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the dispersment in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred, eight hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents for the court costs and fines. And they're due from our community.
We have support.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, did we have any other late items, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
All right, so now we'll move on to our dispersments and statements and then our reports, so I'll defer to our Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of August seventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two million eight hundred fifty thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered.
Thank you, I'd also like to move to approve the Board of Review Minutes of July twenty twenty-three, the City Beautiful Commission Minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the Cultural Commission Minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the Downtown Develop Authority Minutes on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Historical Commission Minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, and June twelfth of twenty twenty-three, and the Planning Commission Minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. I will go to other council business tonight. I actually have nothing to update or bring up, we'll start with, it looks good. We'll start with council here and first up, we have Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I do not have anything this evening.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Councilwoman Bond Crooks.
Uh, yeah, just one thing, um, I wanted to mention to Kevin Sargent, the, the weeds are the, I don't wanna come bushes, on the tracks at Fourth Street and Norwood, they're on the east side of Fourth Street. We've cut those down before because when you come around that curve to turn, you know, going north, they're really high again and you can't see to pull out on Fourth Street, so I think Rick and I have talked about that before and we need to have those, you know, if they can do it, cut those down again so it's safer for other, you know.
Absolutely, cool. Already got the thumbs up from Kevin, so that's all said. Yeah, we'll get that scored away for sure. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, that was great. Yeah, not, really nothing else tonight, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things, I know we've talked in the past, I've talked to the administrator and Mike has brought stuff up too about different ordinances and things like that, about vehicles parked on the street, boats, campers, all those things, and I know his guys do a great job enforcing that with the stickers, but of course, if they move them and move them ten feet one way or whatever, it, it does what the ordinance requires them to. My question is, is who enforces the grass-cutting thing? I mean, you know, we, we talked about this when we had private contractors about, you know, they're cutting our sidewalks and, you know, we got on them about making sure they're clean and everything, but.
So, all right, you're not gonna like some of what I got to say, so.
Well, you didn't let me finish, buddy.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I, who enforces the part for the residents and all these grass companies? Cause, you know, I'll use Weston Grains, you drive by, they're cutting the grass at those businesses and it's all laid on the street when they're done.
Right.
And that's screwing up our sewer system and his guys out there sweeping the streets cleaning it up.
Correct. So whenever it's spotted, whenever it's seen, the, the inspector would take care of it and try to resolve it right then and there. I mean, it happens on a regular basis, I mean, I, it's, it's unfortunate, not a lot of stuff you can do with it unless you see it or it's reported and you know who did it, cause there's always that, that denial thing. But as far as the length of the grass and everything on, on private property, I won't tell you how, how long your grass is allowed to be kept in the ordinance because it's excessive as far as I'm concerned, but that's another thing that, when they see it, it's enforced. I get, I wouldn't say regular calls, but they're not infrequent for sure, complaints about grass cutting, so the way it works with abating an issue is you, a lot of times you can just knock on the door and go, hey, can you take care of it? And it gets resolved, but we have a small minority of, of homeowners, just like with parking the trailers and moving and play the move game, they'll do the same with the grass cutting. So we send them a notice when they aren't cooperative and we let them know it's gotta be abated. That takes care of almost all of them, but we do have a challenge when we wanna go, finding them is not as big of a challenge, but going in and cutting it is because you get into all these trespassing issues. So it's generally, we handle it by sending a letter and we get compliance if a door knock hasn't, hasn't done it, so.
Okay, just checking.
Yep.
Thanks. Nothing else, bud.
Cool, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pate.
Uh, thank you, and just to follow up, just driving around the Down River area in general, just the lack of grass-cutting by businesses is, is incredible to me that there is no pride in ownership and they have weeds coming through their bushes and, you know, you go to other communities and they don't look that way. So that has been something on my mind, I don't know, you know, there's not a lot we can do to, cause it may not be the height and where we're at and it's only certain times a year that we can send letters to, correct? So, you know, just if businesses could put a little extra effort into pride of ownership, that would be great, but I only mentioned that because you did as well, so I think that businesses are just as, just as bad at this point. I did want to thank all the people who were at Chalk the Walk and all of the things that they did to help out. This is, again, a Trail Town event that we have to put on to maintain our pure Michigan Trail status, so that would be the vendors of Corewell Health, the Guidance Center, Nurture of the Future, also housed at the Guidance Center is the SUDS program. The, I'm gonna have to make this a little bigger, sorry, the Trenton Parks and Recreation, of course, for, you know, letting us use the facility in the back behind Kennedy Rec Center and the trails and all the, the volunteers were great that we worked with. Officer Chapaniak and his crew were there from the Trenton Police Department, they did a fabulous job working with the kids and getting to know the kids. The Trenton Civic Commission, who was meeting here earlier, just the whole crew showed up and helped out with the library table, the library was also, Donna set up the table for everybody and then the Civic Commission manned it. We had Ranger Todd from the National Wildlife, International Wildlife Refuge Center giving guided tours. We had a DTE with their safety truck out there showing people what happens when there's live wires and so forth, and also the Michigan State University Extension Nutrition Department showing kids how to eat healthy and, and then, yes, we did have the Story Walk and I just wanna thank Donna for working with me on Story Walk and getting that put through. We already have about thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars worth of donations toward that cost by local people who are interested in this and also some businesses and including myself and whoever else would like to donate, I encourage you to look at the, the proposal that we came up with and there, there are different levels of sponsorship if you're interested in. and there are different levels of sponsorship if you're interested in sponsoring a book or the get branding on the panels and that sort of thing. But it's to encourage kids, and that's what this whole event is, to see that there is a trail that is a beautiful trail. In fact, I had a picture of an egret that we saw. Ranger Todd was able to talk with the kids and tell them what it was. And the trail extends from Van Horn all the way to King Road, and it's right there behind Kennedy Rec Center. So that was just a really fun event. And I thank Councilperson Rodriguez for helping out and helping me pack everything and interact with the people that came. As, oh, and chili beans ice cream. Sorry, didn't mean to leave them out. So thank you for everybody who participated in that. Also wanted to mention a thanks to Jean Pendell and to let her family know that that is a treasure there at the Cultural Center. And my kids played in that children's area. And I just, probably a week before she passed, took my grand niece there for the first time. And my actual niece said, well, how long has this been here? And I said, honey, that's why we're here today. I'm, you know, we're getting out, I'm showing you what Trenton has to offer, even though she lives in another town close by. But you can come and bring the kids. And we spent at least two hours there just playing and looking around. So Jean did a wonderful thing for the community, and I'm sure she is going to be missed. But, you know, she's paying it forward with all the kids that will be there in that garden. And then, again, as usual, I think I've probably forgotten something, but I think that might be it. We probably will have another slow roll coming up, so just kind of watch out for that. Hopefully, we will piggyback on the events that the Parks and Rec is doing with their summer concerts. And Tim can tell me whether it's Tuesday or Thursdays that those are on? Tuesdays they are on. So we're going to try and piggyback on that, do a little slow roll, and then stop at the concert. So watch out for information on that. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Purusi?
Yes, Mayor, I have nothing.
All righty. Councilman Cabo Watan?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. Tim, hey, great job on the concert, the Tuesday night concert. I think it was your first one the other night, and it was really cool. We took some time to sit outside on the porch and listen, and it was, they did a great job. So speaking of the Cultural Center, I too would like to extend my condolences and sympathies to the family of Jean Pendell. Connor spent a lot of time over at that garden. So that's a big loss to the community, and she did a great thing over there. Other than that, you know, I'd like to extend my appreciation, thank you, to both of our chiefs here tonight. You know, you folks were really busy over the weekend with Jazz on the River, and it wasn't our event, but it brought in a lot of people. And I know you folks were busy. Tim's crew was busy down at the marina. And so I just want to thank all the employees that were out there, you know, representing the community and serving not only our folks, but the visitors to Trenton from near and far. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Councilman. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Madam Assessor, got anything? All right, easy enough. Mr. Treasurer back up there.
Yeah, I've talked to the clerk and assessor, and they've ceded their time to me.
Triple up, there you go.
Yeah, here we go. No, there's, I just wanted to mention the Jazz on the River. It's their 26th annual. That is a gem within a gem. It's in Elizabeth Park. It's a wonderful event. Fire and police do help out when they're able to. I saw a couple folks, the fire folks in the park, and I know police was helping with traffic on the outside. So it's a great event. I wish we were able to give more focus to it because it's a really laid-back group that the audience is. It's just a wonderful group that's within there. The other thing I want to remind folks is that I want to appreciate the folks that have paid their taxes. It's deadlines coming up. It's August 31st. It's a Thursday, if that makes any difference. And thank you for those that have paid, and for those that haven't. You got a little bit of time. And if you haven't gotten the bill, please contact our office. Next item was that Rotary Club meeting, surprise, surprise, on Monday. And we had a guest speaker by the name of Chief Mike Hawkins. Did a wonderful, wonderful job. Very proud of him, as I am proud of the community. Did a wonderful, wonderful job. I know we got all the time in the world, but this is the list that I got, came away with, the note taking. And I came away with your top 10 list, so I'd be willing to share that with anybody that wants to know. But Mike, you did a great job. I appreciate it. And the other thing is, the final thing that I've got is, we do have a guest celebrity in the house. As I recall, I'm trying to do the mathology on this, is that the mayor was three years old when Patty Visco started working here at the city of Trenton.
I think it was four and a half.
Huh?
It was four and a half, I think, if we do.
Okay, it's ballparking here.
Might be three and a half, yeah.
I'm the treasurer's office. We could ballpark the damn. And I am kidding, by the way. I got people behind me that are, will not allow that. Anyways, Patty is here. Raise your hand. This is the first meeting, I believe, that you've been to to witness her son as mayor. And I think that's very, very special. Patty was a great asset to the treasurer's office and to the city for 23 years. So thank you. Anyways, I'll applaud you. That's all I got.
See, the reason I didn't say anything is because she can't hit you. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Hi, Mom. All right. Yeah, she's going to be thrilled about that. That was good. All right. Any of our department heads wishing to speak? I will go to any in person first, then those on Zoom. No one rushing up there. All right. We'll open it up now for public comment. We'll go to any folks in person first, then those on the Zoom. Anyone on the Zoom, if you could please use the raise hand function under either participants or reactions. Ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. All right, whenever y'all are ready, floor is yours.
My name is Chris Sikowski. Address, 2834 Fifth Street. I have appeared at a city planning commission that was scheduled in March, but was postponed till April. I recognize some familiar faces that were at that meeting. My complaint is the flooding that continues to happen on the Fifth Street Alley. I've had great correspondence with Mr. Creach. He has been very forthcoming with information that he can give me. At that meeting, Mr. Creach mentioned, that meeting was, I was there because they were proposing a park, a paved parking lot at 2876 Fifth Street. I had a survey done of that property that showed a public easement. Three years ago, I was at the city, and Christopher Gibbs gave me drawings of the drainage that happens in that area. And he said, we're thinking of tying the Fifth Street Alley into the Fifth Street Drain to alleviate the flooding in Fifth Street. I don't believe that that can happen, but Mr. Creach can probably address that after. But Mr. Creach did mention there was probably $26,000 they were going to use in emergency funding to possibly alleviate that flooding issue. I specifically mentioned in that meeting that if anything ever happens to the drain that runs from the alley across Mans parking lot, any Mans parking lot, into the Wayne County Drain, that we would never get rid of our flooding on Fifth Street. Well, something has happened. Any Mans has done work in their gravel parking lot. I believe they've added some catch basins. They've done some work. Ever since that has happened, and this is, I believe the work was done in early April, the flooding situation has got extensively worse. It is not rainwater any longer. The water isn't going down the drains. It is a fountain coming up out of the storm sewer. I have walked the whole length of the drain system. I've been shocked what I've found. It's getting, it's getting so much worse that my basement now has flooded twice in a week. Once with about two and a half inches of rain. And my fiance and I went on vacation last Friday. On Sunday, we came home, and the water was a foot and a half deep, sitting in my basement for three days. I have an oil film on the doors, the walls, the floor. And I don't know where to turn or what to do any longer. But I cannot put up with this. And my questions are, what, if anything, is going on with the emergency funding? Was there a permit pulled for the work done at the NA Mans Storm Drain Work that I believe they did in their back? It is no coincidence that the flooding is worse ever since the work that has been done in that parking lot. What has the city found out about the work done at Mans? And what about the Wayne County Drain at the end of the outlet?
Chris?
What can be done about this?
Could I have you go one question at a time, and I'll try to help you?
Absolutely, Dean.
Because I'll lose track.
No problem. But I only had five minutes, and I timed myself.
Well, no, we'll let you pause on that, yes.
I thought it was two, and I was using a one-minute timer, so.
For what it's worth, yeah, I've learned far more about drains the last couple of months, I'd imagine, but.
And first of all, Kevin has been very responsive also at the DPW, and so has Ryan been in communication with me too. But I'm at a loss here. So what, if anything, has done with the $26,000 emergency funding?
Well, it's not, it's not a matter of funding to correct your issue. So that's, that's not unwillingness or inability.
Was that the last meeting?
But it can't be corrected. We thought at that last meeting that another drain could be put in to take it out to the street. It can't be done. It's, you don't have the pitch to be able to flow the water. We would do that, and the water would just sit there. We had the engineer out there, I think, within two days of the last discussion, and they did their laser thing and whatever, and they checked the pitch. So that's not, that's not a viable option. Even if we wanted to put in a lift station, it's not, it's not really the... Gee, do I have to quit talking? It's not really, it's not really a viable option. The problem with your property or the back end of the property, first of all, the work that Mans did is a issue. However, it hasn't contributed to the flooding. I know you feel that it's gotten worse since then. What they did is they disconnected from that drain. So they are no longer tied into our drain that goes across their lot. We verified it with cameras. I'm telling you, it's, it was confirmed. So.
Can I, I'm questioning everything.
That's okay. But, so the water flows from both ends of your alley, goes down, and then it goes across the Mans property. And then it goes into County Drain, which goes downstream. Our drain, all the city-owned pipe, is crystal clean. It's been pumped, it's been cleaned. Everything is the way it should be. That area has always had slow drainage and everything else, but that part of it works. I can have you look at the camera shots. The camera confirmed that Mans is not tied into that anymore. So there are water that, and we had the engineer check the pitch of the gravel work and everything. He doesn't feel that anything is contributing to it. The problem is, once you come off of Mans property and tie into the County Drain, and you have to remember that the County Drain comes from the north along, there is significant blockages. We were able to pull up some documentation that the previous, you know, 25 years ago, the city engineer predicted that this was going to be an issue because of the overgrowth and everything that goes through, that impedes the drain down the drain. When it comes through the Mans property, it takes a left and drains out that way. It's blocked. The county has been very responsive, probably the most responsive, not that I'm not being critical of the county, but they've been extremely responsive and helpful. And they have had Wade Trim out there developing a game plan to get that drain. And surprised, all right, I won't be negative. Thankfully also, the railroad has been willing to step up and do their part with the clearing of it. Because we, nobody really has access to the area when it gets farther down the drain. So until that gets opened, there will, it will be a slow draining process. There's nothing we can do other than wait. It's not, it's nothing that we could take on ourselves. We wouldn't be able to be permitted to go on the rail right of way anyways. It really looks like something that they're going to have to bring in a railcar with the crane and be able to dig the material out to get it all opened up. And it literally involves a ton, tons and tons of brush, viney growth, and hundreds of trees of various sizes that are going to have to be addressed. And it's, it's not our, it's not our drain.
I have walked back there and never been so defeated in my life when I walked out of there saying to myself, it's never getting done.
No.
It's, I know the magnitude of that problem. It's huge.
I believe it will get done because.
It looks as if somebody was back there 20 years ago. The head wall for that pipe is laying on the bank, and it's been pulled out of there. It looks like an ancient ruin.
I know. I'm well aware of it. I, we're working with the county, and we're doing, we're doing as much as we can from there. It's not, it's not a cost issue for us, whatever. We've done everything we can do on our side. I feel the county has been expediting their process. And surprisingly, like I said, the rail company has been interested and engaged.
Is it their property? Is it the railroad's property?
Yes. A good portion of that is on the rail right of way. And you can't, you can't just go in there and dig. Even if we could physically get in there, which we can't, you can't just go in there and do it without their permission, and you have to have a permit and everything else. But it's, it's really, I hate to, you know, put it in the county. It's in the county's lap, and they're the ones driving this year right now. But what I can tell you is, by having all of our pipes and everything clean, it's going to, it's going to be a degree of improvement for you because this all happened since.
I saw the work that you guys did last week.
So that, that will improve. Is it going to still hold water?
It's the first extensive work that's been in that alley in three years that I've been there.
No, that was, that was cleaned two years ago, I know for a fact.
You sent pumper trucks back there, but there's been catch basins in that alley that I have walked for three years and could not find, and they have been dug up now.
Right.
But they were probably a foot and a half under the dirt.
Right. So once the blockage is relieved so that the water will flow freely or more freely, our plan is to dig all the muck out of the alley and change the height of the drains there. So it'll help and improve. And then we'll be able to put a better load of gravel down so that you don't deal with the mush, the muck, and the retention pond that essentially you have.
I feel that the alley has become Mans' retention pond. It's what it is.
Well.
Did they alleviate their problem by all the drains they put in and pushing it somewhere else?
No.
No, I see it fill up their parking lot and fall over the edge.
And just go, if you look at the videos you sent me and showed me and everything, I mean, a two-inch pipe is not gonna.
Four. Four isn't going to take ten out. You can't feed, it's creating head pressure. That's why I can't be convinced.
But that, they are not connected to the city drain.
These four Mans did their work. The drains just sat there still.
They ran slow.
Now they're gushing like a geyser.
How is that, how is that, I want to know how that coincidence happens. How does that coincidence happen?
It's ridiculous.
I have documented dates, times, video, work being done, work being done, work being done. The next rain, it's a fountain in the alley.
Right.
And now it's coming in our house.
Not. Not rainwater.
Right. The, the catch basins and everything were not as, as clean because you had a blockage.
Mr. Creach?
Yep.
I respect you immensely. And you do a great job. But, three years ago, I cleaned those sketch basins out myself with a homemade pipe and a scooper on the end of it. That, that alley was flooded 10 inches deep three years ago, and in 45 minutes, I have a video of that water rushing down that drain.
Right.
It's, was at least working.
Right.
It slowed, it slowed, it slowed. Mans did work and it's.
And it's gushing.
Right.
Absolutely the opposite way.
But if you, if you understand that the endpoint is not getting the flow through, that's why all this sludge, all the other extra material was sitting in the pipes going through. We went through, it's been jetted, it's been cleaned. Our, everything we can clean and we can correct has been done. Without regard to expense, investment, time, whatever. We're trying to do what we can for you. I can't go in their drain and correct the issue.
I understand. I understand. I have one more question now that we've been speaking.
Okay.
I've walked the railroad right away. Legal or not, I've been there.
I'm okay with it. I'm not writing tickets.
And I've seen the four inch pipe coming out of the Mans property that they put on the railroad property.
Yep.
It drains on the top of a, not a grated manhole cover, but a hulled manhole cover.
Yes.
A hulled manhole cover, I believe, is for air. So that when the storm sewer works, you have certain manholes that alleviate air, which is like a event on your house. It lets air go and the water flow. If they're pumping completely on top of that and collapsing that, is that causing the backflow issue that we're having in our alley? I don't know. It's beyond my expertise.
Right.
But I see that happening. I see that happening.
Right. Well, one of the things that is different is worse is we've had two, uh, sizable rain events. One was one, 1.75 inches in 30 or 40 minutes. And we had another one that was estimated closer to three inches of rain in just a little over that period of time. So those, listen, we had street flooding, the one, the day you had it worse. Ms. Payton speak. We had street flooding all over town through that swath. You were part of it. There, even if that drain was open, you were going to still have issues. We had, uh.
I will give you that one.
Yep.
But when it's a act of God, I'll, I'll handle an act of God flood. But when it's an act of negligence and neglect, I'm not handling it.
Fifteen years.
Yeah.
At the, at the planning commission meeting, you publicly stated, and I really appreciated you saying what you did, that you apologized, that the citizens in that area have been dealing with that for 15 years. I've only built it with, with it for three years. Some have died dealing with it.
I've met the grandchildren of people who's.
Said they fought.
All I, listen, I'm not making excuses. I, I'm not gonna, I, I'm telling you exactly what I know, the facts. We, I reserved, I didn't even email you back until I had the exact evidence, the pictures, everything, so I could speak from a factual point.
And as far as the 1.75 inches of rain, I got it. I understand that. We had .05 inches of rain. I had seven inches in my garage and an inch and a half in my house. .05 inches of rain. It rains 10 minutes. We got 10 inches of water in the alley. It is the retention pond for Mans lumber.
Okay.
And the viaduct.
And the viaduct. Those drains don't work.
That, those, those drains, I, I truly believe those drains will be resolved in, in time. But it's, I, I'd be lying to you if I thought it was going to be overnight. It's, it's an extensive issue and alarming thing is.
A year? Two years? Longer?
Well.
I'm serious.
I don't know. I, I, you know what?
I bought my house and no one disclosed that it flooded. I cannot sell that house if I do not disclose.
It's, it's not, it's not in, in anybody, it's not in our control. I am putting as much pressure. Uh, we have regular meetings. We're, we're advocating and trying to push it along as much as we can, as fast as we can.
And, and that is exactly why I'm here, because I need to, that, I need to know that every member of the council knows. I need to know that the mayor knows what's going on. You have been very receptive. I appreciate it greatly.
I feel terrible for you. I really do. I think it's, it's a horrible, it's a horrible situation. And, and Kevin and our city engineer and everything have done, uh, a, a great job. And they've been very aggressive about it. And the county has been extremely responsive and, and getting on it. And now we know what the problem is. Now it's a matter of, I, honestly, if we, if it weren't for the need for the railroad to be involved, um, I think the county would already have alleviated the issue. And that's the truth. Um, because.
I, I'm exhausted.
Have you seen Gibraltar's pumps? Can we get a pump back there like theirs? Go down Gibraltar. They've got them everywhere because they have a flooding problem. Can we get one pump back there for us?
Well, you can put, a lift station could be put in, but it's going to take us.
I'm talking a gas triggered pump that turns on when it rains.
Like in Gibraltar, they're everywhere.
Stick the pipe in the manhole in the, in the.
Yes. If, if we have, uh, another, I hate to say catastrophic, but an act of God, one of those rains where it's completely not manageable or whatever, yes, we can, we, it takes us some time, but we can do that. And we have the ability now that it's all clean, that we can pump it over land and, uh, drop it in the sewer. But.
I know. It's, it's, uh.
Yeah, why react? Why not be pro-act?
I, I, there's nothing I can do.
Why can't we get a pump put in?
You can't.
The Gibraltar pumps sit there till they need them, and then they turn them on when it, when it's flooded.
And I believe, I believe that they're activated.
Like a sub.
Automatically, like a sub.
Right. That's how you work, that's how you work a lift station. But it takes months to put that all together.
I'm, I'm.
Well, you've had years.
So.
Not me.
No, I know, it's not your watch.
I'm doing what I can.
It's not your watch, Dean.
Thank you.
What I will promise you though, is I, to be honest with you, I, as someone who knew next to nothing about drains until the last several months here, Dean and I have talked about it probably three times a week or so. Um, but we're gonna absolutely, absolutely keep on the county about this. Because, yeah, at the end of the day, it's about what's right and we will do anything in our power, um, you know, cost irrespective, that it's just the right thing to do for you guys. So, not going to promise any wholesale solutions from us imminently, as Dean mentioned, especially when it comes into railroad timelines and things like that. But it's very, very much, uh, been a part of every conversation we've had in the last, over many months now at this point. Um, so.
Well, we're going to keep on chugging too.
That's okay.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll be back.
All right. Don't see anyone on Zoom. Any other public comment? Oh, yep, right ahead, sir.
My name is Jim Boomer. Live at 2961 West Jefferson, across the street from the Rivertown, um, bar. Um, there's a lot of things I'd like to talk about this particular establishment. Biggest problem we have is the noise. It's terrible. The music is so loud. The outside speakers are left on after 10, 11 o'clock at night. All we hear is the thump, thump, thump of the bass and the drums. That's how we hear with the, whatever acts they're bringing in. It's, it's terrible stuff. It's not even, it's not even worth listening to. But the stage is pointed at our house. Why is that stage not pointed at their clients? That quote stage, I was told by the, uh, inspector when I talked to him one night, that was not a permanent structure, that it's just there for special events. That's never left. It went up, it's never left. It's sitting there right now. I understand the city, they have the ability to run that business, and I understand that. But I didn't think that we were going to give up our right to a night's sleep. And that's what it's become. We don't sleep at night. We can't have our windows open. It's obnoxious. They're rude. My wife went over and talked to them one time. They were not helpful at all. All we're asking for is that we can get a night's sleep. It is not what we were told in the planning commission meetings, what it was going to be. At that meeting, second planning commission meeting about this particular establishment, was that it was going to be a American bistro restaurant. Music was, they hadn't even decided, but the, the owner, Mr. Angelotti, said, "Well, if we have music, it's going to be like a folk guitar. We're not going to do anything electric." I mean, and, and the planning commission, you know, okay, great. It's been electric from day one. And it's been loud, very loud. I have a friend lives at the end of Elizabeth Road. He was going to come down tonight, although he got caught up in something else. He can hear it at his house. We sleep with our windows closed, locked, earplugs. Doesn't work. We can't sleep. I work a job, uh, that requires me to be out of bed a few days a week around 4:00, 4:30 in the morning. This isn't working out. And we're asking you to possibly uphold the ordinances. We're getting different stories on what the ordinance is. I know the noise ordinance is 10 o'clock. And as far as I'm concerned, this is all noise. Whether it's music or loud people or whatever, it's noise. And it's very disturbing. I know you want the business. I know that's what the city wants to do. They want to bring people down here. They want to invest in downtown area. Great idea. Take the citizens into consideration. I mean, we've lived there a long time and never had to deal with anything like this. And I, I told my wife when this went down through the planning commission meeting, that this is what this was going to turn out to be. And she was hopeful it would be a restaurant and something nice. It's not. It's, it's a bar. It's just a flat out bar. And, uh, there's nothing very exciting about it. And they're very disrespectful to all of us who live in the area. I, I've got a couple of neighbors with me who deal with this also. Um, you know, one particular one, I, I think he would speak to the fact that it's the, the radio, the outside speakers. One of the, one of the young men lives in the neighborhood came home from work at 4:00 in the morning. The speakers were still on. Now, that doesn't happen all the time, but they were on. We have to call the police. I'm sure the police has better things to do than make trips down there or phone calls down there to tell them to turn it down. And how many times do we have to tell them to turn it down before they get it through their heads that there are ordinances and people who need to be respected? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Boomer. We'll, uh, yeah, without knowing offhand the exact ordinance or whatever, but we'll definitely put that on our radar and see what we can do. So, thank you. All right. If any other public comment? Let's see if we got any. And not seeing any on Zoom. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 8:31 PM. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Yes.